All right, let's call this Richfield Planning Commission meeting for October 22 to order. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting for September 24, 2018. Do we have a motion for that?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda. So shortly, we're going to have a public hearing about the comprehensive plan, but if you have anything else you want to address the commission on, now is your opportunity to do so. Okay? Then our next item would be approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the agenda? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our first item is conduct a public hearing to consider a recommendation for approval of the 2040 comprehensive plan. Staff?
Thank you. So before you, you have a draft actually on your computers. You have a draft of a document that we have been working on for close to two years now. The staff report covers our outreach and the main changes that the document proposes. Again, that link that you were sent as part of your staff report and that was provided as the online agenda links to the entire plan. Tonight, for the benefit of the audience and those at home, Lance Bernard of Hoisington Cogler Group is going to go over how we got to this point and the final steps in this process. And then key staff members are here to answer questions after Lance's presentation.
Evening. Thank you, commission members. Wanted to spend tonight just briefly, as Melissa mentioned, really overviewing where we, how we've gotten where we are today with the comprehensive plan update and then provide some general information about some of the overarching themes and changes that we've made to this comprehensive plan and then certainly have staff available to help answer any questions. But to kind of first get started, this is a process that is required by state law. We need to update the cities. Every city in the Southern County metropolitan area has to update their conference plan every 10 years. So this round updates are to do at the end of 2018. So we're right on track with that schedule. It's taken us a couple of years to get there. And then in the last six months, we've gone through a mandatory adjacent jurisdiction review process where we're issue the plan to our neighboring communities and other state agencies to get their feedback on the draft plan and certainly work through that as part of this effort. So overall, this plan is really an overarching document that provides the city guidance and direction over the next 20 years. So throughout this two-year process, we really wanted to have a very engaging effort. We worked very closely with an appointed advisory committee that helped us through this two-year process. We also then worked very closely with staff, but more importantly, had a number of public engagement opportunities to gather ideas, gather input and feedback, and really weave that into the plan to recognize what we heard. And I'll talk a little bit about that here in a moment. But as you can see here, we did a number of pop-up events, open houses, online surveys. So we really did our best to really canvas the community to the full extent possible. So want to walk in and talk a little bit about the various chapters or plan elements, if you will, in the document. A few I want to highlight tonight, but by no means does this really cover the breadth of work that's really gone into this plan. I think within a 10-minute presentation doesn't do justice for all the time that the advisory committee put into this and city staff. So there's a lot of information to digest in this plan, but want to just go over some of the key highlights and some of the various areas of the plan. So kind of getting back to the public engagement plan, we again canvassed the community and really wanted to recognize what we heard by the community. And certainly, at times, there's compromise and we need to work closely with the public to try to really reach a consensus of how we best move forward in the next 20 years. And so some of the things we spent more time talking on with the community a little bit is really who are we as a community, the urban versus suburban nature that people have kind of associated with Richfield today and in the past. Certainly talking more about land use densities, housing, bike amenities came up quite a bit, really understanding the bicycle pedestrian network was a topic for many community members. And then certainly recognizing in the comprehensive plan, the valued characteristics and amenities that the community has for Richfield. So the community directions chapter really kind of lays that foundation, but then also takes a next step further and really understands how the community's growing over the next 20 years. And a key part of this was doing a little bit more detailed of a market analysis to really help us inform a key area of being 66 and Nicollet Avenue. So we used that to help kind of paint the picture of what the community might look like over the next 20 years from a growth standpoint, but then focusing in on this area. And so we worked on developing some more illustrative concepts to just help that dialogue. So there's more narrative in the conference of plan about what this area could look like, what it might look like in the future, and providing some more guidelines of how to facilitate development in this area. But then more importantly, looking at just past planning efforts in the community as well. We know that this isn't a total overhaul of the conference plan, but there's been a lot of past planning efforts that we wanted to weave into this and other subareas studies that have been done over the years. So from some of the public input, well, from the public input process and some of the information that we gathered, we wanted to really help refine and shape the existing goals and policies of the document. But one piece that was, we felt was missing is really a clear vision of what the community is. And we used a lot of input to help craft this vision statement that then is recognized in the comprehensive plan. So won't read it word for word, but this was, I think, was certainly an exercise that we worked very closely with staff and the advisory committee on to craft this to help refine our goals and policies. So two of the bigger chapters I think most people gravitate towards is our land use chapter and a housing chapter. Overall, this was still an update to the land use and housing chapters, but we were really looking for more narrative to really kind of clarify how the community's projected to grow over the next 20 years. So looking at the growth forecasts that were designated by the Metropolitan Council in addition to the affordable housing goals that they set for the city. So there's much more narrative and much more information in the plan that talks about that growth. But overall, there really wasn't any significant changes to the land use plan map itself, but more clarification on the land use categories. So there was much more refining of the land use categories to provide better definitions. So for example, in the old plan, there was probably about four or five office categories that seemed to kind of make more confusion than anything. So we consolidated those to wrap them into more of the commercial mixed-use categories to help simplify the plan a little bit more. Then again, we recognized a lot of the kind of the redevelopment areas that have been planned in the past, such as the Cedar Avenue corridor and 494 corridor. We recognize that there are some other areas of potential change in the future, such as the transit being planned along 35 and 66th Street, what that intersection could look like. Again, this is, we're not making any recommendations or changes to that area, but just recognizing things that could potentially change much further out in the time horizon at this point. The transportation plan really brought into a lot more planning that's been done by city staff and others that really focused much more on multimodal efforts in the community, looking at pedestrian, bicyclist, and transit. So we really kind of flipped the paradigm this round in the transportation plan where we focused on those modes first before we really focused in on the roadway plan. So we wanted to make sure that we had a very fair balance of all modes of transportation in the comprehensive plan, but this really leveraged the bike master plan, headmaster plan, the complete street policies, and some guiding principles that have been set by the city in the last year or two. And then one of our larger undertakings in updating the plan was in parks. This was an opportunity for us to focus a little bit more on a master plan effort and just looking 10 years out. So we did a lot more work of really understanding what's in our parks today, what are some of the emerging trends, what are some of the needs. But more importantly, really, what do we need to do to maintain what we have in place today and make sure we keep creating vibrant parks and key destinations in the community. So part of that master planning effort, we then really got into a little bit more cost estimating, putting some planning level dollars behind our recommendations to help staff and elected officials inform you guys and your capital improvement investments over the next 10 years. So as we presented some of these recommendations to the community, we heard a lot of input on dog parks and soccer fields and investments back into Woodlake Nature Center, and then again, maintaining what we have in place. So we really tried to focus on those key areas based on public input, staff input, and others as well. I'd like to just kind of round out and end this presentation to just recognize that this is a plan that's a living document. It's not meant to just sit on your shelf. And I think the proof is how the cities used this in the past. The last plan that was updated in 2008 has been updated 10 times. So it's again, this living document that staff continues to use, elected officials, you guys use all the time. So there's things that probably will likely need to be continued to discuss and monitored moving forward that aren't fully addressed in this comprehensive plan. Ongoing topics that we see that would continue to be part of the discussions in the future is just really looking at the development areas, looking at the 494 corridor, Penn Avenue, development at 66 and Nicollet, and then really monitoring your growth over time. I think the growth projections that were assigned to the community a few years ago were fairly modest, and the council has recognized to some degree that they may want to adjust those with city staff guidance of getting them a little bit closer to what we're seeing today from a development perspective. And then there's always the merging topics that continue to be part of planning discussions, engineering discussions with things that we can't necessarily predict now, but certainly with the ominous vehicles and emerging technology and climate change, there's certainly more to be had and more discussion that could play into your next update or maybe some revisions down the road here. So that's pretty much the, again, that high-level overview of some of the bigger things we've worked on. It again, doesn't provide justice for all the information and effort that's gone in here with advisory committee and staff's help. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for city staff or for Lance prior to the public hearing?
Yeah, I do have a question. So in our, in the commission packet, there was a memo from the Met Council that listed a ton of suggestions that they had for our comp plan. I think that was from June. And so when we first got this, that was the first time I had seen that listed list of suggestions. And so I did notice that there were some of the things that had been written in the memo that had been put into the comp plan. But how was that decided? And maybe I would have wished there could have been a little bit more communication about maybe like a study session to kind of go through the Met Council's suggestions versus what we had in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Holberg, for that, for that suggestion. In the, in the future, we can certainly consider doing a study session about that. Those comments were from the Metropolitan Council's preliminary review. We submitted our plan early to see if it would be considered complete as submitted, and they responded with those comments. Comments were divided into areas that would prevent our plan from being considered complete, and advisory comments, suggestions that they had for us, things to look over. Those advisory comments were evaluated by staff. They were evaluated based on the feedback we heard from the community. And, and that is how the decision was made whether or not we should move forward and make those changes or just keep those things in mind moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay, thank you. So let's, is there any reason we shouldn't begin the public hearing now? Okay, so this is a public hearing. So anybody who would like to make any comments about the comprehensive plan, this would be your opportunity to do so. Each person can speak for up to five minutes. Yep, and you can just go, go straight up if the person is done speaking. So go ahead and be our first one. And just some reminders, please state your name and address. And if you can stand right in front of the mic and talk directly into the mic so it gets recorded. Yep, perfect.
Tastine, Tastine. My name is Al Carlson, and I've been a resident for 48 years of Richfield. Happy, proud resident. 6538 Newton Avenue South. And imagine my surprise a couple weeks ago when I found out my property was zone commercial. And I thought, whoa. Wife and I were looking forward to downsizing and joining our retirement. And I said, well, dear, they put us in a box. Because my understanding, you can't sell it as residential now. It's in zone commercial. And if you did find a residential buyer, you'd have to know, I don't know how long the house is going to be here. I guess I'm wondering, is there any address I have on my, my side of it? Or is this cut seal and cutting stones? Situation is just the two houses there, mine and my neighbor's. And we've both been there since a blacksmith shop. Happy, happy. So we're very surprised. I wonder why, what the thought process was to take those two houses and zone them commercial.
And I would say we don't, we don't generally respond in line with comments, but we're making a note of this and we'll ask staff to respond to that at the end.
Okay. Is there a chance that I could meet with somebody or set something up?
Yeah, you could definitely speak with staff and they, I'm sure they'd be happy to meet with you after, after this. But we'd like to address your comment before we've taken any action too. So we can do that at the end of the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Carol Hayes. My address is 1036 Oak Terrace, North Mankato. I'm representing my brother and our family. We have the property next to Allan Mary at 6544 Newton Avenue South. And I guess some of our questions, and I'm not sure in what format the questions should be asked, so I'll just ask them. Is that what you would like us to do or?
You know, in, in general, it's most meaningful if you can give us a statement, but if you have questions, we'll answer that at the end.
Okay. Are there any commercial plans yet for our property since you've deemed it neighborhood commercial? Does that mean we can sell the property to a single-family? Or does it only have to be commercial? Can we continue to make improvements on the property? Can it be sold as a single-family dwelling? Is the city interested in purchasing the property? How will this affect the taxes? And what precipitated the change in zoning? I guess that would be our questions for our family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Powell, and I live at 6800 Emerson Lane. I come here tonight in front of you, City Council and ATR staff, on behalf of my family and neighbors, some of whom are with me tonight, Johnson Roer and Steve Archer. We wish to go on record tonight for the city's comprehensive plan as being in opposition of any development of the vacant lot that's located at 6812 Emerson Lane. I've been a resident of Richfield for the past 15 years and a Realtor, edifying a realty for the past 16. I worked significantly in Richfield and in the neighboring cities and have experienced, along with many of my neighbors and people here before you, property values that have increased due to the good city governance and sound plans for its future. 6812 Emerson Lane has acted as green space and vital habitat for our renowned Woodlake Nature Preserve. We, as a neighborhood, wish to preserve what precious green space is left in our city, as that is one of the significant differentiating features that we can tout and be proud of as current residents and acts as a very appealing attribute to future residents as they assess which city they wish to call home. We thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Judy Mo, and I live at 7345 Bloomington Avenue. And I'm also the co-founder of Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership. And I just read this entire thing today. And I guess I'm questioning the term comprehensive, which is in the title, and kind of wondering what your definition of comprehensive is. You use the term inclusive and equity many times in here, but people with disabilities are never mentioned in this entire document. And I know that the person who presented talked about that you had different open houses and different things like that. So he felt like he had a good idea of what the community wanted. But people with disabilities have significant barriers to go to things like that, including transportation, which is one of the things talked about in here, but not referencing them. And so, you know, people with disabilities make up 10.1% of Richfield. And that's very similar to other demographics that are here in Richfield, but are referenced in this document and talked about. And I just wanted to say one specific thing. In goals and policies, there's a huge box here talking about social equity. And it references, let's see, it says, for instance, race, race, ethnicity, and age continue to be predictors of health, you know, et cetera. It goes on and talks about housing and recreation and stuff like that. And on this goals and policies first page here, the first thing that's listed is committing to equitable opportunities for all. And, you know, I, I obviously, I question that, and I question the entire document since, you know, going through housing, going through all these different categories, and people with disabilities are not even mentioned one time that I saw. And under housing, it's talked about more than once, about wanting to have housing that is for, you know, everyone's life cycle. So you include young adults, first-time homebuyers, move-up housing, which is allowing growing families to move to a larger home, and empty nesters, and housing with supporting services for seniors. And affordable housing is talked about a whole lot in that chapter. Again, people with disabilities are not mentioned at all. Obviously, they need somewhere to live, and their housing is pretty important. Currently, we really have no accessible housing in Richfield. And, and so, you know, this plan says that this is for the next 10 or 20 years, you know, looking ahead. And I would really hate to have a document that is supposed to represent Richfield for the next 10 or 20 years and completely exclude an entire population of people. And not to mention addressing the issues of lack of housing for them, transportation, all of the things that affect them that are referenced having to do with other demographics. So I'm concerned about the fact that you're calling it a comprehensive plan and that you're using the word equity a lot. And I would really hope that you would go back and consider adding those things. If this is supposed to represent the next 10 or 20 years, I think that people with disabilities should be represented in here. Yeah, pretty much. I'm Raven Mo, and me and my mom both live at 74th and Bloomington. And look at the screen, Mom. And my concern isn't just affordable housing, but it's also accessible housing. And me and my fiance have been looking a lot in Richfield for accessible housing plus affordable, and there's almost nothing. We've seen probably like, maybe like, what, one or two, maybe houses like that are near me and my mom, otherwise, like no apartments. And so I just hope that in your plan, you consider, like my mom said, not just affordable, but also accessible housing as well. Thank you.
Um, anybody else like to speak? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of closing the public hearing? No, all in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. So I'm wondering if we could just go through some of the items that have been raised first in order, and I'm hoping that staff can respond to them. The first one were the two property owners on Newton Avenue. If I'm not mistaken, there's a similar type of designation west of Penn on 66. So I'm hoping staff can talk about what that is and maybe address some of their specific concerns about what that means for their, their home.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Here for the leery. The property is at 6538 and 6544 Newton. That is not a change to the comprehensive plan. That actually has been that way since at least 2030, I'm sorry, since at least 2008, when we adopted that plan. The designation is community commercial. That means that you can continue or you can sell those houses as single-family homes indefinitely. Or you could sell them to someone who is looking to develop the properties commercially. That would be your choice. There could be limits on expansions to those homes because of this designation. So they're fine to continue for eternity as they are. But if someone wanted to put, let's say, a second story on that home, that, that could be limited by this designation. I'm happy to meet with you and talk through the details of this at any time. I can give you my contact information after the meeting, and we can talk through that. Great.
I'm going to follow up to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So how does that differ? If I look at the existing land use map on that property... If I look at the existing land use map on that property, it is listed as residential from 2017. I think that's a page, it's on the comprehensive plan.
Correct, Commissioner Rudolph. The land use is, is what is happening there now. That is the current land use as opposed to the guiding land use.
Okay.
So the current land use is what is actually happening on the ground today. That in some cases, that doesn't match what properties are zoned for and in some cases doesn't match what come, what properties are guided for. So what that's saying is that currently those properties are used as single-family properties. They are guided for commercial use in the future so that if a developer were to approach those property owners, come to an agreement with them to purchase the properties, they could build something, a commercial development there.
What type of hoops, one that has added a second floor onto his home, would someone need to, if they sold their house, residential house, to somebody that say wanted to expand? What type of hoops would that person then need to jump through to be able to do that?
That really depends on the specifics of the property and what they want to do. I hesitate to give a blanket statement on that because it can differ from parcel to parcel.
Yeah, I'm only using that since you mentioned it.
Right. So generally, in our, in our programs, when a property turns over and there's a point of sale inspection, we do our best to mention to people that they should check the zoning and the land use of their property to make sure they know what the rules are for their property. And that's where we'd hope to talk to someone about that. Many realtors also know to check zoning maps, to call the city before they purchase. We work hard with our realtors to make sure that they're guiding people to us. And that's how we handle that.
Then just one clarifying question about the limits on expansion where they do exist. That's regulated by the zoning code, right? Not the comprehensive plan?
If a property is zoned for something other than what it is used at, or if the zoning changes, for instance, if this property was zoned for single-family and the zoning was changed to a commercial, the property would be considered legally non-conforming or essentially grandfathered. They could, that grandfathered use can stay as it is indefinitely, like I said. But as soon as you go to change that to expand or intensify the non-conforming use, the zoning, and there are statutory requirements at the, at the state level and local level that dictate what you can do there.
Okay. Commissioner Penn, did you?
It's currently zoned, as you said, it's zoned commercial. Because if I'm looking at the Richfield 7/2018 map, it's currently zoned residential.
That's correct. It is still zoned residential. At the, in the past comprehensive plan, we worked with the Metropolitan Council to not rezone properties that were not, single-family properties that were not in imminent, in the process of changing to a commercial use. So that we could allow people to expand or make modifications to their homes if something wasn't on the way. And that's why this property wasn't rezoned. I don't know that the Met Council is going to let us continue to do that. We're, we're working through that. Generally, the zoning of a property has to meet, has to match the designation in the comprehensive plan.
Well, then can we change the designation until they decide to move so we don't handcuff them literally?
We'd be happy to talk to this property owner specifically. You know, the comprehensive plan is a long-term vision.
I understand that.
We want to guide for what we see happening in the future. This is, I believe, I am, I'm not certain about this, but I think that those properties were likely changed as part of the Penn Corridor redevelopment plan in maybe 2007. They're on 66th Street. It's a major thoroughfare. If you only designate one property as commercial, it doesn't actually leave you enough space to do a commercial development. So I believe it was part of a well-thought-out plan for the future. Those, those property owners, as they have, obviously, for more than 10 years, stayed there and lived happily there in their single-family homes, not even knowing that this had happened. And that can continue to happen if, if they sell to another person who wants to buy a single-family home there, that would be fine. But this is really a future-looking plan. I hesitate to recommend changes like this to, right.
Anything else, Commissioner Rudolph? Commissioner Quam?
Are residents notified of the zoning change when it happens? Sounds like maybe that didn't happen or what, what's the procedure for that?
Right, any zoning change, yes, absolutely. The property owner gets a notification that when comprehensive designations are changed, a notification is sent as well. You know, I, I don't know what happened 10 or 15 years ago that they, that they didn't know, they know now. This time around, we send individual notifications to every property owner. This is your designation now, this is your designation, this is your proposed designation. We do our best. I can't, I can't speak to what happened then.
So, and of course, there's a lot more discussion to have happen here and we can make recommended amendments if that's desired. But I do want to be sure we get through the list of the questions that were raised by the other residents who spoke. So if staff could respond to the questions about 6812 Emerson Lane, is there anything within the comp plan that we would do that would relate to their request or is that more of an HRA concern?
Excuse me, Chair Heford O'Leary, could you, could you repeat it?
No problem.
On your having side?
Yeah, 6812 Emerson Lane. I'm just wondering if, I believe it's been designated low-density residential, it would continue to be. Is there anything we could or should consider related to that in the scope of this hearing?
Right, there is no change proposed to that piece of property right now. It was purchased by the city's HRA in about 2005. The single-family home was removed. It was purchased for redevelopment. The city obviously can continue to consider what to do with that property. We own it. However, that's not something that would necessarily, that we could recommend changing today because the plan thus far through two years of, of public engagement has shown this property as low-density residential, that's what it's proposed as. And again, it's, it's a bigger decision and a bigger discussion with the HRA and City Council if we want to change that. So tonight, I wouldn't recommend any change there.
And just to be clear, since there are a number of residents who express concerns, what, what might their next step be if they have concerns about that property? Who should they talk to?
Yep, they can contact their council members and the HRA members. Also, the HRA and Planning Commission and City Council are going to discuss this property in November. I believe there's a study session scheduled for November 13th. You should double-check that date on the city calendars. November 13th and the time will be set. But watch for that date and attend that hearing and, and kind of see where the discussion is going with those three bodies.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing was from the, the Moes, the coverage of persons with disabilities, are there ways in which they are being accommodated that might not be obvious or is there anything you'd like to say in response to their concerns?
Right, I would say that equitable development for all was certainly intended to be an all-encompassing statement. But I see no reason why we couldn't explicitly call out accessible housing. I know that has become, has, has really risen to the forefront of our discussions lately. It's obviously very important. I don't see any reason why we can't add language in here to make sure that that is explicitly listed as a goal for us.
To follow up on that, I know that with regards to accessible building, there's a lot of changes that would need to happen with building code and it might be mean more than just adding like accessible into the comp plan.
Oh, absolutely. I don't mean to, I don't, I don't mean to state that this is, this is a, yep, we're going to fix it, we're just going to add a couple of words in here. I mean that I, I hope that people do not feel excluded because I, we did not specifically use that terminology. And I want to explicitly use that terminology so people know that we meant to include them in, in there.
I guess my concern is that if we are being asked to approve the comp plan tonight and there's not a mention of disability accessibility in the comp plan, I guess I would be confused as to how we would do that.
Right, Commissioner Holberg, I think that you could recommend approval of the document with modifications made to add language related to accessibility to the Goals and Policies and Housing Sections where other, where, where other misrepresented or underrepresented populations are mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I do have kind of a question that's a follow-up to that. Couple of them, excuse me. Are there any other plans, documents, anything like that, that actually do have, like the sole focus is on disabled access, accessibility citywide? Is that something that can be potentially cross-referenced in the plan where it's, you know, because I understand, you know, like we're up against a timeline with the Met Council approval too, and I understand, you know, how to fit that in and make it work with the plan as a whole unit is kind of difficult. So like, can we reference other things like that? And for the record, are there other things that people can be aware of?
Right, Commissioner Penn? There are not right now. I know that that's something that staff needs to learn more about and that we're actively working on. The council may, has made it a priority for staff and we're doing research now, but a document does not exist to reference right now. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Jack Rose. I'm the Transportation Engineer for the City of Richfield. Within the Public Rights Way, we do have an ADA Americans with Disabilities Act, a transition plan. And so that, that deals with all of the issues that's guided our design. So if you see changes in our projects like Portland Avenue and 66th Street, the accessibility hopefully is much better than the previous project. But we do have a document that focuses on within the Public Rights Way. We do have a transition.
Okay, so, so thank you. There is one plan. I would say that that's, that's not comprehensive. That's not going to address all of the things that we want to talk about when we talk about accessibility. But yes, we could certainly make a direct reference to that plan and call out that more work needs to be done.
Any other questions for staff or general comments at this point? And then I think procedurally, the way it might be good to handle this is if we had a general motion to approve, assuming that's the direction people want to do, and then we had individual motions for amendments since there are a couple of individual issues. I have an individual issue, I want to raise two. But I think it'd be easier to get this going if we have a general motion to go off of first to make individual amendments and sort of act on those individually. What do people think of that? Or alternatively, we...
Well...
Sorry.
I think we've got two issues that we want to, probably if I'm reading everybody right, address. One is the houses on Newton. I would like, you know, if, if Met Council is going to make us change the zoning to fit the comprehensive plan, I'm not comfortable with, you know, changing their zone into commercial as well as, you know, being a disabled veteran as well, having language within the document to address people with disabilities. Correct?
I, I agree. My concern with just having it all together is that it doesn't allow us to sort of have the nuance of saying, I feel strongly in support of the accessible housing issue. I don't necessarily agree with you on Newton Avenue, for example. It'd be nice to be able to have those discussions individually. And that's why I'm suggesting if somebody were to make a motion to approve and we could amend that motion individually with votes, that might be the most orderly way to do it. But if there's a preference instead to do sort of an informal list of what people want and then have one combined motion, that would be fine, too.
Commissioner Heford O'Leary, I, I would recommend a general motion to approve and then individual amendments just for the ease of staff and making sure we understand the, the details of each amendment that you're proposing so that we get that right.
Okay. But somebody will be willing to make such a motion, a general approval motion, bearing in mind that we'll have time for discussion and amendments to that motion?
That's correct. So what we're looking for is a, a motion to approve the comp plan. Someone will motion. Someone will second. And then there will be a motion to amend the, the motion to include language about accessibility.
So that'll be on two separate motions then? I just want to make sure we have an umbrella one and then we're going to, then we're going to modify.
Correct.
Okay.
And we won't vote on that initial motion until we have the final amended motion after we make our individual amendment votes.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
Do we have a plan?
I think?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we have discussion, so now we can discuss individual amendments. There's also one that I wanted to bring up and I made a little worksheet to talk about it. It's a little bit wonky compared to some of the bigger picture things, but I'll go ahead and just pass out this sheet and have a couple extras for staff. So I'm a little bit concerned in some of our development areas. Currently, we've got, if you want to just keep passing the extras down to staff, we've got no limit on residential density, that's a dwelling units per acre in our sort of core areas and high-density residential. And my understanding is the Met Council requires us to specify some limit. Currently, the limit that is proposed is 100 dwelling units per acre. And just so everybody's clear, because it's a little bit weird of a term, so if you think of every, with single-family homes, if you have four houses, they're each a quarter of an acre, it's four dwelling units per one acre. But when you get to multifamily, it gets a little bit weird because it's basically the way the interior walls are divvied up, even though it's the same building dictates how many dwelling units per acre there are. So if you have a building full of 500 square foot studios, it comes up as a much higher number than 2,000 square foot really large condos. So we have a situation in, you know, 66 Lyndale area where we have a number of really high-density buildings, but they appear to be quite low on this measure because they're very large units, like City Bella has 1,500, 2,000 square foot condos. So my concern is we, we're basing this off some of what's already there. If we were to approve the 100 dwelling unit per limit, 100 dwelling unit per acre limit, we'd actually take one of the existing buildings that we have today in Richfield and make that non-conforming because that's 122, that's pictured on this handout, would like point. And my concern is that would prohibit financially viable developments and other potential redevelopment sites in that area. And just an example of what, what does that look like in terms of buildings over 100 dwelling units per acre? I have three examples. Flats at West End on the backside of the sheet, that's 111 dwelling units per acre. So we're not talking about allowing, you know, massive towers everywhere. These are four to six-story buildings. The central apartments is even shorter, it's a four-unit, four-story building, 132. This one is also on a site that in Richfield would be too small for PUD, which is how we do our exception process to allow it otherwise. So particularly around 66 Lyndale, we've got the Wendy's site that's less than an acre. We've got the post office site. Depending on what might happen in the future, we've got the liquor store sites. So I'm hoping that we could agree to increase the limit to 150 dwelling units per acre to allow more intense development on those sites. So I'm specifically asking for 150 dwelling units per acre in mixed-use districts along 494 Corridor and the 66th and Lyndale area. So, sorry, nerding out there for a second, but any questions or reactions to that?
I want to say this is a pretty good analysis, Sean. You know, thank you for the work that you've kind of put into us and the thought. Interesting, what, what would not fit currently?
Yeah, and again, currently, we have no limit. I, I think the need to have a high limit was from the Met Council, if that's right. So we, we have 100 in the document today, 150 for the record is what Bloomington has picked for their upper limit. So I think it would be a reasonable thing to make.
Staff, do you know, you know what the other, Sean, you know what Edina or St. Louis Park or things like that are doing?
Commissioner Rudolph, I don't know those off the top of my head. Commissioner Heford O'Leary did bring this to our attention prior to the meeting and we did discuss this. Our thought, as opposed to redoing all of the tables within this, within the document, was to specifically call out in this, in this area that through the PUD process, you could amend to be similar to developments that exist now. So he's calling out the Wood Lake Point development that exceeds that 100 dwelling units per acre, explicitly putting some text in their qualifier text to say, we would allow up to this. this. So essentially, making sure that the flexibility that we're already building in is enough flexibility to get us to that point. Now, I do realize that Commissioner Haverd O'Leary did provide one example where the site was not one acre and the PUD process wouldn't be possible. That is one site. I suppose that could happen. I I think that that is, that's less likely to happen. It was, so, it's another option, and our our thought was to amend the text to accommodate this rather than to amend that upper limit.
I would say that there are more than one site. There are three sites that I listed as examples, although there are no current plans to change those. I think between now and 2040, a lot could change, and that could be one of those things. I think there's also additional land that could potentially be subdivided in other sites as a small site. So I would like to have us do the flexibility. I'm hopeful it wouldn't, since so much of the tables are proving that your minimum meets the requirements, I don't think it would be a ton of extra work for staff to change that. But, so in the interest of having this just be clear in discussion, so I would make a motion to amend the upper density limits for 66 and Lindale and 494 to allow up to 150 dwelling units per acre, and that would, a motion to amend the original motion with that item. So is there a second for that?
Second.
So any additional discussion of this proposed amendment to 150 dwelling units per acre in these areas?
I do, Mr. Chair. So, obviously, a lot of thought was put into putting 100 DU per acre. Can you, I don't know, can you tell us, Lance, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, can you tell us how we came up with the 100? Or Melissa? And and I I missed what you said your recommendation was after hearing from Chair Haverd O'Leary.
Commissioner Quam, right, the 100 was picked based on what is essentially out there. There is an outlier. Wood Lake Point is an outlier. You know, is is that a magical number? Absolutely not. Or is staff vehemently opposed to 150 dwelling units per acre in these areas? Absolutely not. It's, right now, it's unlimited.
And I reiterate, I think picking a number higher than what we have today takes that spirit of unlimited and gives a practical cap to it. Picking a number lower than even just the one outlier is is a policy change from what we have today. Any additional discussion of this item? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to 150?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Can we go through? Yeah. Commissioner Penn?
Yeah, I'm just, it it sounds like the, how you want the the change stated versus how it potentially could be stated in the comp plan are two different things, and I guess it sounds like there might be an alternative to what you're requesting and still achieving your goals for 99% of what you're looking for. Is this true? I mean, it sounds like you can change, you can change text versus changing an entire series of tables, maps, everything else in the comp plan, is this correct?
Commissioner Penn, there there are changes to the tables that will be have, that will have to be made, we'll specifically have to look through the infrastructure, the infrastructure plan again, but is this, is this such a large change that it's going to prevent us from meeting our deadlines? No.
And just to be clear, I mean, you're welcome to offer explanation, I was just trying to get that, I I only heard a few voices, so I didn't, I wanted to actually ask what your vote was, so.
Yeah, I I feel like I didn't really, I wasn't quite clear on, it seemed like there were two alternatives here, and there the, there was, of course, a second alternative, and at this point, I I might be inclined to vote with you if that's, if if it seems like staff is agreeable to it.
The motion passed, four to two.
Okay, okay. You don't, you don't need to know who, okay, I only-
I do, it was Penn and Quam.
Penn and Quam were nay? Thank you. Okay, so, with that in mind, do we have any other motions? I know we have at least two others people would like to make.
I would like to make make a motion to change the, to change the designation, being Met Council is going to force the zoning change of the two properties on Newton Avenue to residential. I cannot, being a homeowner that has done extensive renovations and things like that, I would hate to handcuff, you know, our residents with their properties.
Commissioner Rudolph, can you please speak directly into the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Not quite getting it.
I would, I would like, I would like to change the designation of 6544 and 6538 Newton back to residential in the comp plan.
My only concern with that is that if the neighbors here were coming for clarification on, like, what it meant for their property, we have really no idea, like, I think it might make sense for them to be able to meet with Melissa and get more detailed information, but that would be my concern, is that, as a homeowner, I I wouldn't feel like I had enough information, just based on kind of what we had here, and would prefer an individual meeting, but I don't know, that's my-
So just just process-wise, it would be helpful if somebody seconded it, so we could have our formal discussion of it, even if they intend to vote no on it, they could still second it. Do we have any second to consider this motion?
Could you just repeat what you said a little slower?
Thanks, bad habit of mine, thank you for reminding me. It would be helpful if we could just get a second just to discuss this formally before taking a vote on it. If we don't get any second, we can't take a vote. Okay, Commissioner Rosenberg has seconded it. Commissioner Holberg, did you have more to say about that, or was that your statement for discussion?
Sorry about that. My, just my only concern was that before we would make any changes that would be permanent or amendments that would be permanent, I have, I would feel more comfortable if they had a chance to sit and talk with Melissa about what the exact details are and how it could be best financially for them. I I think there's a lot of implications that, that's just my opinion, though, so.
Well, do we need to make a recommendation to change it, that, make sure that you do meet, you know, before moving forward with the council on this, with them?
Okay, and I was thinking, one reason I asked staff earlier about the zoning process is I'm wondering if we could potentially create more flexibility in the zoning code? I don't know if that's possible of, I think, at least in the Cedar Corridor, we had a very strict limit of, like, 10% increases. So if creating more flexibility there maybe more, makes more sense. In a, in a really rigid sense of the property owner's rights, they stand to actually make more money selling it for a commercial use than a single-family use. If they have the option to do both, personally, I would think I would prefer to have that that power as a homeowner, but you're right, they they need to meet with staff and figure out how that affects them.
Commissioner Rudolph, if I may, if you were going to propose to change the designation of an individual or two individual properties, we would also want to go back and have a separate public hearing to notify everyone within the general radius of that property, like we typically do for individual property changes and zoning changes. We would want to go back and and go through the full process on that, so I think step one here is meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you still want us to act on your motion, or would you like to withdraw this motion?
Well, I would like to, would I withdraw it and change it? I want, I want to make sure that you meet, I guess, to, I'll withdraw it.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa.
And then we have the additional item of the need to address accessible housing. Does anybody want to make a motion on that item?
I would like to make a motion on this item, but I am not quite clear on exactly what this motion means in terms of, you know, what you're capable of doing with the comp plan at this point, so I guess I'd like to have a little more interaction with staff and members here.
Sure. Commission, I would recommend a motion to include language specifically related to accessibility in the housing goals and policies section, as well as the social equity sections of the plan. You could make a specific, we could, you could add to that motion to add a specific reference to the transition plan in the transportation chapter as well.
I know that moving forward, and thanks to the advocacy of Judy and the organization that she's created, I think there'll be a lot more education that, you know, the city will be able to gather from that group, and they've already done a lot of really amazing work, and I'm wondering if there would be a way, and I don't even know if this is, like, correct jargon or not correct jargon, but in the demographics section of the comp plan, there are certain things broken out. If we could break out an essay surrounding disability as a demographic, I know it's tracked as a demographic in, you know, universal profiles or whatever for humans, but I'm wondering if that would be a possibility.
Commissioner Holberg, I can, I can commit to looking at that, I can't commit to including it, because I don't know what data is available and the sources of the data, but I I can commit to looking at that before we move forward with the council.
Yeah, that would be great. The Department of Human Rights has a ton of information on on this, and I know that now that we have more advocacy in the community on it, I I think that it wouldn't be. Because I know that there is ADA compliance within any sort of building code, however, I know that that doesn't often go as far as many people need. For instance, we don't have a microphone in here that somebody who's in a wheelchair can reach.
Chair, members of the commission, Julie Urban, our housing manager, I just wanted to add, the other section where I would see, in terms of housing and accessibility, that I would like to add is, there's a, on page 68, we talk about additional needs. From a housing perspective, we don't see the comprehensive plan as covering absolutely everything we will always do regarding housing, and so I use that section as an opportunity to list, here are some areas and things that we need to look at further, sort of a to-do list for us, and I would suggest adding accessibility in terms of housing to that section.
I agree, I think that would be a great spot to add it in in that section as well. And also, I mean, I would just like to request the possibility of adding a paragraph into that area surrounding demographics, because we do cover, like, you know, what do families look like in Richfield, and if 10% of the folks living here have a disability that's affecting their housing, I think that's significant enough to kind of pull it out a little bit and not just have it be like a bullet point, but, and I know that's not what you're suggesting, I'm just saying that I feel like there could be a little bit more, like, a paragraph.
So Commissioner Penn, did you want to revise your motion, or Commissioner Holberg, do you want to make a motion?
Very loaded motion here. I would like to revise the motion to include very specific language about the disabled population as a demographic, as well as accessibility in terms of our housing sections, our goals and policies. Is it okay for me to just list off each of these as I, please correct me if I have missed one? Housing goals and policies, transportation, parks, except, you know, Parks Master Plan, if that's a component, and the accessibility of our parks as well, I'd like to see that in the demographics section as well. And also, as you had mentioned, to include a reference to the transportation plan, is that correct? Just the, just the overall transportation plan?
To the ADA transition plan.
Thank you. Was that a proper motion?
I think that'll, that'll work. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? No, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other discussion of the comprehensive plan or any other proposed amendments?
I just want to say thank you to the staff and all the city staff and the groups that worked on this, and it was a lot of work, yeah, I sat in on a couple sessions myself.
I'll put, anything else?
And not, just, I was just looking under the land use section. On the the cemetery that's on Penn Avenue, I see that part of that is medium density. Is that, is there, are there anything proposed for that, or did that change back when there was a proposed development on, in the cemetery on Penn? Because there's still a piece of that, this medium density, is that-
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Just a holdover from when that proposed development was talked about? That would have been back in, like, in '06 or '07?
That remains from when the property owner was looking to sell, and we did those, we did a number of charrettes and workshops to figure out-
So really, nothing has come along since that?
No, there's no new proposal for that land, it's, it's just been left.
I just, you know, I, that kind of sticks out like a sore thumb there, you know, on on Penn, and I'm like, is there something else? But that was a holdover, it's been, what, 12, 12 years ago, I think, when that happened?
It's been quite a long time. You know, our understanding is that the the landowners have no desire at this time to sell that. They also haven't approached us to talk about changes there, and so it's been left, as it is.
Okay, it's just been left there, okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I'll, I'll keep it brief in this statement, but I, and I don't have a, an amendment to propose on this, because it's just kind of a bigger picture issue, but I do want to say that I'm excited about some of the progress that we made around the hub site, but I'm ultimately, I'm disappointed with what we have in this plan. It's not enough for me to vote no on the plan by any means, but I hope that we do more in the future. I went back and looked through sort of our Wiki mapping comments, and it was very striking, if you guys looked at the map, that the hub unfortunately was the center of red, angry exclamation marks of all the things that people saw wrong with Richfield. And we've suggested a lot of things that are incremental improvements to how the site might be in the future. I I think we needed something more thorough and more fundamental, and I hope that at some point in the future, we can revise this plan to address that in a, in a way that really sustains us, but it's a, it's a step in the right direction, so. Anything else? All right, so all those in favor of approving the comp plan with the amendments as approved?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. So our next item would be canceling a public hearing for an interim use permit for landscaping a snow removal business at 7138 Chicago. Staff?
I think the, the report here says it all, the applicant has withdrawn the application to pursue other possible tenants for the property besides that, the landscaping and snow removal business that they were talking to at the time that they applied. And because notice was published and mailed out, we need you to cancel the public hearing.
Do we have a motion to cancel the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of canceling the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So now we need to consider a motion rescheduling the December Planning Commission meeting to December 10th. Apparently, we don't want to meet on Christmas Eve, so. Staff, any, anything we need to know about that?
Nope, that's it. There, the Monday, the 10th was a date that there were no other city meetings on, on Monday nights. I believe the following Monday, there was an HRA meeting already scheduled, so we had to move back two weeks then.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move the December meeting to December 10th?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, liaison reports, Community Services Commission? City Council? HRA?
No report.
Richfield School Board?
No report.
Transportation Commission, they continue to discuss the pedestrian plan, they've got draft plans online, so you guys should take a look. And there was some more discussion of Lindale Avenue, but that's still chugging along for next year. And Chamber of Commerce, we don't have anyone. City Planner's Report.
City Planner's Report. I did, I was just going to forecast that Emerson Lane potential study session on November 13th. And that is a study session with the HRA and the City Council. There is a developer who is interested in the site. I know a number of you were not around in 2005, when we purchased that property and demolished the single-family home back there. We have been trying to redevelop the site since then, and so there, there is someone interested. The three groups will talk about it then. I believe the time will be 6 o'clock, but we'll send out a confirmation as that date gets closer.
Thank you. I mean, just because we've got an interest about that tonight, are, is the neighborhood notified in advance of that, or is that just, is that one of those things that we do after the fact?
Typically, we do not notify the neighborhood of work sessions, but I I don't think it would be a problem to send, they, I believe they have a spokesperson for the neighborhood, so we could contact that person, yes.
That would be nice.
Mr. Powell, who is here tonight. Typically, we do not notify the neighborhood of work sessions, but I don't think it would be a problem to send, I believe they have a spokesperson for the neighborhood, so we could contact that person, yes.
That would be nice.
Mr. Powell, who is here tonight.
Okay, yeah, I'm thinking especially those folks who are here who heard about the